Double duty, taking you down any?
A little, but I'm alright.
You'll survive?
I'll survive.
Well, good. How you like your other job?
I love it.
Good? It's important that you like your job.
Yes. It wasn't that I didn't like this one, but...
Yeah, you gotta move up.
Yeah. Not having to worry about regular insurance or the kids' insurance has been quite a relief.
When do they get to go on that?
November first.
That's pretty quick. That's pretty good. Keep minutes?
Hi, I'm Martin.
You get paid double. You don't work here anymore, do you? Probably got one of them shockers out in his truck.
That's probably not a good thing for me to have.
You can wake him up if he gets droopy-eyed.
That's right.
Not to mention another thing. I tried to tell Donnie he was gonna be there with the green bench for awhile. Oh, don't worry, that's why I just called and ordered the person around. You'd be jumping up and down, I'm telling you. You ought to put that in mind. Probably organized. How's Echo doing?
Really good.
Good. She's been going up here exercising.
Oh, really?
Yeah. Although... They get us, you know... The other day I was... Holding onto my bum all day, walking around, because I couldn't...
My muscles were so tight.
Yeah.
That's part of it. Stan keeps saying it's costing money. He doesn't like it, it's costing money.
That is true.
He's sitting back there going like this. Let I tell you something, Stan, less money you got, the less worried you got.
Well, I don't know, I was doing some research and... Because I'm always worried about my hips and my knees, because I'm so big. So, it's about twenty thousand dollars each.
For biotic?
Yeah, to replace that stuff, so...
He's got a chair back there if you don't put his hands up like that.
Forty grand, Stan. Alrighty, we'll call this meeting to order. Anybody like to say a prayer? Stansberry? The prayer. I get through yours, I just said it. Anybody else want to say a prayer?
Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day, and Lord, we thank you for your many blessings. And we ask, Lord, that you'll... Help us with this, through this meeting tonight, and keep your hand over all of us. Amen.
With the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Meeting number minutes.
September 12th, 2016, the Board of Aldermen met in regular session with Mayor Hewnalt presiding. Alderman President Rene Edwards, Ron Stansberry, Rick Winter, Doc Crickseizer, Delmar Strange, Ryan Mason, absent none. Others present: Tom Devney, City Attorney, Mark Bros, Cleaner and Associates, Cheryl Elliott, USDA Rural Development, Melissa Yocum, City Collector, Kelly Hayes, Chief of Police, Ty Parrish, Utility Supervisor, Mike Wright, Wastewater Superintendent, Echo Menjes, Edina Sentinel Reporter, Representatives from K&amp;N Excavating, Stanley Menjes, and Steve Golden. Mayor Hewnalt called the meeting to order. The invocation was given, and the Pledge of Allegiance was recited. Minutes of the August 8th, 2016, and August 25th, 2016, meetings were read and approved. Collectors and Treasurers reports were given. Cheryl Elliott, USDA Rural Development Specialist, met with the Board. She reviewed the checklist for the final bond closing for the city's $3,464,000 Combined Waterworks and Sewerage System Revenue Bonds, Series A and Series B. Some of the final items to be completed included a review of the city's insurance and additional coverage if needed, after all contracts are finalized with grant funds. The city's attorney will provide an opinion on adequacy of insurance coverage, monthly profit and loss financial statements for one year, and yearly reports to USDA Rural Development. Mark Bros, Cleaner and Associates, met with the Board and gave an update on the sewer project. He also presented pay requests for the contractors, and the following action was taken. Motion was made by Rick Winter and seconded by Ron Stansberry to approve the Municipal Pipe Tool Company LLC Pay Request Number Four in the amount of seventy-one thousand, two hundred eighty dollars and thirty-six cents. Motion carried unanimously. Mark stated that the estimate of funds to be requested from USDA Rural Development is $107,669.24, which includes the cleaner invoice in the amount of thirty-six thousand, three hundred eighty-eight dollars and eighty-eight cents. Motion was made by Rene Edwards and seconded by Ron Stansberry to approve the estimate of funds recommended by Mark Bros. Motion carried unanimously. Mark explained some of the items that could be completed at the wastewater treatment plant using the grant funds that are available. Motion was made by Rene Edwards and seconded by Delmar Strange to approve a new electrical service at the wastewater treatment plant, which will result in an increase of ten thousand, three hundred forty-two dollars to the contract with Kia Cut Contractors Incorporated. Motion carried unanimously. Motion was made by Delmar Strange and seconded by Rene Edwards to approve new underground service to pumps, including four new disconnects, which will result in an increase of twenty-three thousand, one hundred twenty-eight dollars to the contract with Kia Cut Contractors Incorporated. Motion carried unanimously. There will be an additional charge for the labor and materials for the four breakers. The approval of these charges, changes, will result in Kia Cut Contractors Incorporated Change Order Number Seven, increasing the contract thirty-three thousand, four hundred seventy dollars. Bros reported that bids were opened August 25th for the Purcell Street Sewer Improvements. Six bids were received, with the apparent low bid being submitted by K&amp;N Excavating of Carthage, Illinois. Motion was made by Delmar Strange and seconded by Ron Stansberry to accept the bid of a hundred and thirty-nine thousand, forty dollars, submitted by K&amp;N Excavating. Motion carried unanimously. Peggy Collins, City Treasurer, reported that she had provided a typical budget for the Sewer Department to USDA Rural Development as required for the loan closing. Peggy also provided some information to the Board from the Department of Labor regarding a law that will be going into effect December 1st. She noted that there are specific definitions for salaried position, and the city's one salaried position may need to be changed to hourly. Motion was made by Ryan Mason and seconded by Ron Stansberry to pay all bills as presented. Motion carried unanimously. Department reports. Ty Parrish, Utility Supervisor, met with the Board. He reported that Craig Orton was hired to fill the vacancy in his department, and started to work August 22nd. Ty said Nicholas McCarty has also started working for the city through a work experience program administered by GAM Incorporated. Mike Wright, Wastewater Superintendent, met with the Board. He presented a copy of his regular monthly report to the Board, and noted that the mower is currently at the farm shop for repairs. Kelly Hayes, Chief of Police, reported that everything seemed to go well for the annual corn festival. He said he is continuing his efforts to get properties cleaned up in town. Unfinished business, none. New business, the Board considered an application for a liquor license submitted by Ryan Mason. Motion was made by Doc Crickseizer and seconded by Ron Stansberry to issue retail liquor by drink and Sunday by drink licenses to Ryan Mason. His new business, The Blue Room Restaurant, is located at 105 South Fourth Street. Motion carried. Eyes: Rene Edwards, Ron Stansberry, Rick Winter, Doc Crickseizer, Delmar Strange, nays, none, abstention, Ryan Mason. Applications for building permits were reviewed, and the following action was taken. Motion was made by Rene Edwards and seconded by Doc Crickseizer to approve a permit for Brian Banks to have a twelve-foot by fourteen-foot, eight-inch sunroom addition built at 505 North Fulton Street. Motion carried unanimously. The contractor will be KC Builders. Motion was made by Rick Winter and seconded by Ryan Mason to approve a permit for Sylvia Miller and Villia Sauerberg to have a four-car garage and bedroom addition built at 403 East North Street. Motion carried unanimously. The contractor will be Kenny Sutton. A written request was received from the Knox County Promotional Council for a monetary contribution to sponsor the annual corn festival. Motion was made by Delmar Strange and seconded by Ron Stansberry to pay a thousand dollars to the Knox County Promotional Council for the services, activities, and public benefits provided by the Promotional Council in connection with the 2016 Knox County Corn Festival. Motion carried unanimously. A new water tower agreement lease with Mark Twain Communications was reviewed. It is basically the same agreement, which is currently in place, that allows Mark Twain Communications the right to place its antennas and related equipment on a water tower, but has new language for current technology. The amount the city receives per year will change from fifteen hundred dollars to a thousand dollars, but the city will receive two twenty M slash two M free accounts for City Hall and the wastewater treatment facility. Motion was made by Rene Edwards and seconded by Doc Crickseizer to authorize the mayor to enter into this new water tower agreement on behalf of the city. Motion carried unanimously. Alderman comments. Some of the Aldermen were interested in an update on a proposed park at the City Lake property, but there was nothing to report at this time. The city has received some interest in renting the formerly Edina Country Club building to a community group for one-day activity. The Board agreed that this might be possible, but no action was taken at this time. Motion was made by Ron Stansberry and seconded by Delmar Strange to close a portion of the meeting pursuant to 610.0213, hiring, firing, disciplining, or promoting of particular employees by a public governmental body when personal information about the employee is discussed or recorded. Roll call vote was taken. Eyes: Rene Edwards, Ron Stansberry, Rick Winter, Doc Crickseizer, Delmar Strange, Ryan Mason, nays, none. Motion carried, and the meeting was closed. When the Board returned to open session, a motion was made by Ron Stansberry and seconded by Delmar Strange to adjourn. Motion carried, and the meeting was adjourned. We also have a special meeting dated September 16th, 2016. The Board of Aldermen met in special session with Mayor Hewnalt presiding. Alderman President Rene Edwards, Ron Stansberry, Rick Winter, Doc Crickseizer, Delmar Strange, Ryan Mason, absent none. Mayor Hewnalt called the meeting to order. Motion was made by Delmar Strange and seconded by Rick Winter to close a portion of the meeting pursuant to 610.0213, hiring, firing, disciplining, or promoting of particular employees by a public governmental body when personal information about the employee is discussed or recorded. Roll call vote was taken. Eyes: Rene Edwards, Ron Stansberry, Rick Winter, Doc Crickseizer, Delmar Strange, Ryan Mason, nays, none. Motion carried, and the meeting was closed. When the Board returned to open session, a motion was made by Doc Crickseizer and seconded by Rene Edwards to adjourn. Motion carried, and the meeting was adjourned.
That's what I remember most of it. Anybody have any... Comments on that? Alright, moving on. The collectors report.
Collections for September 2016. Water account total: twenty-three thousand, five hundred seventy-three dollars and thirty cents. Sewer total: twenty-one thousand, four hundred twenty-one dollars and fifteen cents. Sanitation total: fifty thousand, five hundred fourteen dollars and thirty-one cents. General fund total: nine thousand, twenty-three dollars and thirty-three cents. Recreation total: three hundred sixty-two dollars and twenty cents. Street total: six hundred forty-five dollars and seventy-nine cents. Special lights total: sixty dollars and ninety-five cents. Meter deposit total: eighty dollars. Reserve and improvement fund total: zero, with a grand total collected: seventy thousand, six hundred eighty-one dollars and three cents.
Any questions, Alderman? Moving on, Treasurer's report.
And I don't think we have a Treasurer's report this time, because I want to know how hours to get it done. So, you'll have two reports next month, I'm sure.
That'll be one. Thank you. What's the bills? Does anybody have a chance to pay for bills? Anything out of the ordinary?
Two pumps, I guess, but that was something we talked about.
I believe those pumps are the oil. Anything else? EM 800, I believe. IEM 800 is the oil for the roads, correct?
Uh, yeah.
We had two loads of them. EMC 800.
Three loads.
Three loads, we have two bills.
And one of the other, they're free loads.
Okay. They don't have loads? Maybe it's a buy two, get a buy three, get two?
It'd be alright.
It'd be alright, but I... It's been a long...
I'll make a motion.
All would say? Who names? Citizens' comments?
I just want to remind you that Chambers' Annual Safe Stop Event will be on Halloween, which is a Monday this year, and you guys are members. And we would love if you would have a table where you hand out treats to the kids. So, it's from four to six on Monday, the 31st, and we're opening the community center at three for setup. Last year, we had three hundred and forty-five kids show up, which is pretty... insanely good. We've never had that many. It goes up a little, or usually stays the same every year. So, if you do plan on coming, please plan for at least three hundred kids for treats.
Alrighty. What day is it?
It's on Halloween. It's a Monday.
You answered. Is there any other citizen comments? Stan, you got one? Alrighty, moving on to random from Mark Bros, Lining Associates. Update on sewer project. Action needed on the Purcell Lift Street or Lift Station project. A is to authorize the mayor to exec... executive... execute contract with K&amp;N Excavating. B is to authorize the mayor to execute notice to proceed with K&amp;N. Departments, yeah, with K&amp;N. Alrighty, so we did...
The only thing I've got on the Willis Brothers, they do the one last project, trying to buy the... On the corner of Route P there, or works in between there.
Todd?
On Fulton?
Yeah.
Yeah, they did that over there, but that's separate.
They said there was some settling on that stuff, so I didn't know if they were done done, or...
No, it'll be...
Didn't you think they thought they were coming back this spring?
It'll be, yeah, they'll do that one more time, from what I understood, to settle everything up. That's all they want, get worked one more time. Alright, we need... We need to vote on whether or not I can execute the contract with K&amp;N. Basically, if we're into the contract, we haven't done that yet. And to execute notice to proceed with K&amp;N.
We're in a motion of effect.
We're in a motion of effect.
I would make that motion. I'll say it.
All in favor? We need unanimous. Alrighty, moving on. Department reports. Mr. Parrish.
As we all discussed, the streets, we used... I haven't got the exact numbers, when Mark gets back, we'll put them together and see, but I think we already will use most of our budget up. We went through three tanker loads of oil, somewhere over two hundred ton chips, a hundred and ten, or something like that, ton of asphalt. Like I said, we get the numbers crunched, I think we used most of... Most of all of our budget on that round. If it works out for us next year to put some back in, I'd like to start back in on some in the spring. And finish up where we left off, and keep rolling on that. Senders, we got all our senders in. Those have been hauled in, and there, I don't know if that bill come through this month yet or not. Just be a trucking bill, we always get those for municipalities for free, but... Other than that, like I said, most of the month was chipping and sealing. We've got the tree limbs, we're gonna get on to the school. A few things of that nature, I guess.
What did you... Did you find anything? I've had a comment on, like, the... Hamilis District Road, the one coming south.
Yeah, I'm... I don't know for sure what... We have to do some digging on that, looking, because I don't feel that it's a main, there's no water mains in there. The sewer mains actually be west of where that's coming up at. I don't think it'd be coming back up there, I don't... I need to get back to hold with Gaucho, see if we can get in, and I'm pretty sure their sewer goes out front. So, I'm not... I'm not real sure what that is, for sure. I really, I really don't.
He had asked me to swing by and look, and swung by and looked, and it appears to smell of sewage. We need to probably get on that as quick as we can.
Yeah, I don't... Well, like I said, we'll check into it again and see, I don't... I don't know what it could be. It's like, I'm pretty sure theirs goes out front, but the only thing it'd be is maybe a service. But, we'll just have to time to it and see, I guess.
Was there any digging through the proceedings of the sewer project through that area?
Well, they've replaced... They did point repair, they replaced... I don't remember what it was, sixty-foot line, or something like that, right down through there, but... But, like I said, that main's west of there, I mean, it's on the downhill side, so... I really don't feel that it's a main, anyway, because if it was the main seeping up to the ground, like, it would have to be collapsed and backing up, and then we'd have problems on upstream from there. And plus, it should be making a giant sinkhole, if it's a main, because it's gotta go somewhere. So, that's why I say I'm kinda in... Maps don't show there being anything there, as far as water lines, or anything of that nature, so I'm kinda in...
In the middle of it.
Right, I mean, all we can do is locate it and dig it up, and we was kinda watching to see it first, it was just naturally, like any leak, it's small, but it hasn't stopped, so obviously, like I said, something's...
Yeah, I went by and looked there this morning, it was actually running. I mean, it was wet, it was tracked downhill.
Right, yeah, it's been staying fairly wet, but... It's not a water, because obviously, a water line would be clear watered, running better than what it is, but I'm not a hundred percent sure, like I said, I don't have a good answer on it, and we'll... About all we can do is dig it up and see, I guess. That's where I'm at on it, anyway, unless somebody was kinda suggesting, because like I said, I just, I just don't know.
Is there any way with your own camera down at the can?
I mean, yeah, that's an option, if I can get in their basement, and, because I don't think they have any outside cleanouts. If I can see if, if their sewer goes that way, that's a good possibility that's what it is, is there a service, but I just have to see if they got any cleanouts to get into. So, I'll get on it, and we'll get it checked out, see what it is, but... Other than that.
Any other questions or comments?
I've had some questions, why the top of it wasn't filled before we did the streets. They're rough in the top of them.
There's places where they are. And... Yeah, there are. Yeah, but like I said, we were, we used what material we had to try and patch bad spots, such as, like I said, up on the S-curve between Byall and Dixon's. Several places around, we went and patched. And you know, the plan, whether it was, when we sealed them, was to save what we could save, fill the cracks, hold what we could hold, and that's why I say if we can put some money back for the spring, we like to jump right back on it and get those smoothed up. I mean, like I said before, there's, we all know, there was no good place to start, no good place to stop, I mean, you could literally almost drive a street in town and not hurt a thing. I didn't have the material at the time, but some places, we had put chips in, and we'd kinda made our own a little bit, we'd put chips and shot oil, and put chips, and we'd stir them around, kinda made a little bit of our own. I don't know how those are gonna hold, we tried it.
That's my concern, Ty, I'm not sure.
They may not.
Like where they're on Allen's curve, I don't think that's gonna hold, at all.
On Allen Dixon's curve?
Stay on them.
Right.
Do what?
We have to have an imperial, too, but...
But...
We need to be thinking forward on that project.
Get that in our budget for next year.
Yes.
And like I said, I'd be more than really, like I said, we'd like to jump back on the spring for can, so they don't get... Even if we have to do some of them, we've already did again, just, just to keep them coming, I mean, they're not gonna be perfect, you know, I mean, it's been five years. I can't, I can't flip a light switch and make them great overnight.
No, but what I... What has been done for several nice comments, oh, yeah.
And I know there's holes there, and, but, like I said, it was one of the deals where it takes a lot of time to go through and do those patches, like we're doing with the grader and things like that, so we tried to hit a lot of bigger areas, and then it was one of the deals where we wanted to get what oil shot, like, at one day, we shot almost a whole tanker load, just at one day, because it's hot, we don't have to take the time to heat the oil. We just rolled on, and, like I said, the theory was, we were gonna seal what we could seal, because just to try and hold them together, what we could, and that's why if we get them in the spring, so they don't get all the rains in the summer and all that.
And ask him, how many, how many miles you think you got over there?
Oh, shoot, I don't know on that one, Eric, I haven't been back and looked, blocks-wise. I mean, a big guess as good as mine, I didn't keep track, but...
What did you thought for them, maybe, Ty?
Nah, chip and seal, I knew we could get quite a few blocks, that was kinda my route with going to chip and seal. I mean, when you go to paving, you start eating into your money pretty bad. There's some streets that we felt were beyond chip and seal. Those are ones we're gonna have to give more attention to, as far as, they, they need paved. You know, I think it was gonna be a waste, a lot of them's dirt bottom, and the oil's not gonna stick to them, it's just gonna ball.
So, you didn't do any patching on other streets that you didn't go ahead and do chip and seal on?
Oh, yeah, some of them we didn't. You know, to start with, we patched, and then we chipped and sealed over top of them.
No, I'm saying, did you just patch anywhere and go away, and didn't chip and seal on top of the patches?
No, we, we chipped and sealed over the patch. Anywhere, anywhere we patched, we chipped and sealed over top of it.
You just didn't do any patching anywhere in particular? Patching only?
No, no, anywhere we patched, we chipped and sealed over the top of it. Because otherwise, you've got a, you've got, you know, a break there where you patch, for water to get underneath it. So, everywhere we patched, we chipped and sealed over top of it, to seal that up.
If you bound, mounded over it, it would work down, it wouldn't be, the water would stand in it.
When we patch it, we try to get back up level.
It'll infiltrate underneath it.
But I'm saying, if you don't seal the patch, you know, you've got your good hardener in your patch, the water's gonna get underneath your patch, and then it's all gonna come up, so we just... We sealed them, you know.
Well, it'll be mounted high, but I thought that way it'd have time to walk down a little bit.
We rolled them in, I mean...
The reason why I'd ask how many streets you thought you got on, it would help us...
Right, and we can go back and...
To get with the Treasurer, and see what we need to budget for for next year.
I mean, right, and that's another one of the deals where there's still... There's no end to it, I mean, you know, because, I mean, honestly, you know, I mean, you just gotta get a number you're comfortable with, and we'll try and make do with what we can do with it, but you know, we, when we quit, four or five years ago, the west side of town was what we basically quit on. Now, we did seal a couple streets over that way, but majority of it was the east side, southeast side, which were the, were the spots that been, hadn't had as much attention on them, so... We tried to jump around and put some everywhere to keep everybody happier, but, you know, they just, there's still a lot of streets that need it. But, yeah, I mean, I can go back and try and get an estimate where we're at.
It would just help us get, maybe see what we could get pulled out of the budget. It would just help us get, maybe see what we could get pulled out of the budget here and there.
And Eric, I don't know, what about after the first year, they start checking oil prices again to pre, pre-purchase?
We'll have to see what we can do with the, I mean, I don't wanna go ahead and...
No, not after the first year, I'm saying...
Right.
We might wanna start checking after the first year on the oil.
Well, like I said, if, if we go and budget them, I, I'd, I'd really like to start doing some in the spring.
That's what I'm saying, check, start checking after the first year.
Maybe we can get it bought in the off-season, prepaid for it, and go...
Right.
That's what I'm wondering, yes.
That would be pretty neat if we could get it bought a little cheaper.
Yeah.
If there's, is there any other questions or...
Yeah, that place I showed you down there, Steve Miller's and the old Tar Vegas building, that's washing out the street, it needs some rock in it, 'cause it... Somebody turned that corner short there, you're gonna tear the front end up, man. Get hurt.
Yeah.
It's really washed out more in the last few weeks.
Rains, yeah. I'll get her.
Talking about just north of Tar Vegas building? Of the old, of the old...
Yeah.
That ditch there? Another county church at one time was wanting to talk to the city about doing something different with that ditch, maybe seeing what they could do to help, help, maybe keep that from washing.
In the ditch or something.
Yeah, and part of that, that, that concrete...
There's a cement, side wall runs out there, maybe they...
Retaining wall that's there, it's, it's coming around, the retaining wall.
I give it Larry Clark sometimes, I know we talked about, maybe they would, you know, thought about putting maybe a tube or something in there to help keep it from washing or something, whatever.
That's why it's worse, it's just washing around that retaining wall, it just can't get off.
It's really washed out bad.
Coming around.
Drive by there, you know, unless you already seen it.
I haven't. But I will.
Any, uh, thought then on water, hook up some of that cable?
I'm still gonna try, I'd like to get part of them hooked up yet this fall. Some of them I know where they're at, but I don't think will be too hard. I'd like to get them, a few of them, I won't get them all done, I'm sure. But I'd like to, that's kinda my next plan, is to try and get on some of that, get this deal over there at the ambulance base figured out, and then probably locate there, and I got a tube I gotta get put in. It's gonna take a little time, but, um... Yeah, I'd, I'd like to get a few of those hooked in, you know, if I'm, just, just to keep some water flowing through that line.
Uh, one other thing we've been kinda slammed with, and Ty's aware of it, and I haven't brought it up, this'll be probably just a while later. All of six through town, the state will only be, uh... Taking care of twenty-two feet through town. So we also need to budget for anything on the side streets where the parking, all Casey's, the sinkhole we're encountering there at Casey's, anything wider than twenty-two feet through town is actually the city's responsibility. So we need to, any culverts, anything like that, we need to be aware of that, I wanna make everybody aware of that.
So is one Casey's more than two feet or...
Yeah, yeah, I, I've actually got a pamphlet, I'll, I'll let you all look at it later, or, we're gonna try to copy it, but we just didn't get it done, I don't believe, so... But other than that, uh, if there's any questions on that in the future, uh, uh, they kind of, uh, called me in, and for lack of better words, ambushed me with it, so...
I'm, I'm guessing it had something to do with all that, due to the holes in the road, that basically, that got dumped on us, so...
Yeah, per nineteen fifty-two or fifty-three, or you know.
Fifty-two, yeah.
So, going to luck. But anyway, we're aware of that, and we're gonna try to meet with our treasurer, and I believe you were gonna look at cameras.
Yeah, I'm trying to set some cameras, and see if we can get an idea where they go.
Where all the drainage goes, and see if we are actually washing out, if there is actually holding up drainage tubes from the courthouse going this way, going to Cherries, some of the sinkholes we might, or might not encounter, but where it's washing, so...
The state informs us that they're going to reap surface from the four-way stop to like Lewis Town next year.
And they had said if we could, they would try to give us a estimate. They'll have the company come and give us an estimate, maybe they'll go ahead and pave along the way, 'cause they're gonna chip it out and repave everything. Maybe that they can get it done cheaper than us doing it, so...
We see that, yeah.
Right. That was, that's the whole long and short of that one, I believe, so... If we have no other questions, uh, we'll move on. And then the Dyna Street Foundation, has a full one of those, I don't know, we need a little public. We, we need something. Say more about foundations and other things in the last couple months. Mr. Mike?
Thank you, Todd.
I don't have a tongue for ya. We had some issues when we, we pulled the new power wires in for our, um, plant. We had some issues once we got the new power wires in. The pumps have a seal fail feature on them, which if the, um, seal inside the pump leaks water into the pump, it automatically trips a, um, deal in the sewer plant. We won't let that pump come on, so you can preserve the life of your pump. When we did that, when we pulled new power wires in, we disrupted some of those old wires, um, that are in there that are corroded, the seal wires, which, um, they no longer work. Uh, we've got it bypassed, jumped over inside the panel at the sewer plant. I've got another quote from the contractors, Mark sent it to me Friday, that he said you guys need to approve as a change order, along with some of his stuff, to be able to, um, go ahead and finish that. It, it's a, it's a must-have, I mean, the pumps, they haven't, they haven't been operating properly, I guess, for a long time, because they, they still run, we've... When they have a seal fail, which they shouldn't, they should trip out and, and, uh, um, give us a warning where we can send them off and have them worked on before, they're total junk. It looks like somewhere to the tune of ten thousand dollars, um, to pull new wires. I believe the, uh, parts of the, um, the labor's not at all that extensive, but it's more like parts is gonna be changing that over. Because of what we have is just corroded. The, the box at the pump station where the pumps are at, you can't even loosen the wires up in there, the, the screws in there are so rusted, you, you can't get, you can't even get them loose to try and put new wires in those terminals, so they're gonna put new terminals in there, and, um, new modules that control the actual seal fail lights in the plant, that control the starters that start the pumps on and off.
Could this have all been found before we did all the sewer project, we could run this on our grant?
This is gonna...
We're getting a lot of bills, Mike.
This is, you guys have to do the change order, so it is on our grant.
So it will be covered on the grant?
Yes, yes, this is all, this is all covered under our sewer project. It's not a, it's not an expense, I mean, it's an expense to the city, but it's, it's gonna be covered under our sewer project.
Okay, thank you, that's what I was wondering.
Is that in addition to this fifty-two sixty-eight?
I don't know what the, it's, no, no, it's, it, yes, and it's addition to, those are the motors and, the starters and motors and relays that go...
Breakers.
Breakers that go for the pumps themselves.
Plus another ten grand?
Yes.
And that's also covered then?
Yes, that, everything in Mark's letter and this, this piece that I think Eric had a copy, and Ryan's got it there in his hand. I, I couldn't make heads or tails of that, I kinda went through that. It looks like, on that second page one, it says Tri-County Electrical. Looks like they bumped that seventy-three sixteen to eighty-three thirty-three to be tacked on because of their five percent, which comes to like a hundred and ten dollars, and then they're bonded or whatever, so there's a little bit added there. So that quote from Kid Cut Contractors actually increases by a thousand dollars. That's why I said it's gonna be around ten thousand, because I couldn't make heads or tails of it, to be quite honest with you. And Mark just told me that he sent it to me as an email, and as you can see, they...
Yeah, sold it.
They added five percent here, and then it says, they got the seventy-three sixteen, which matches this quote, but then they got all this where it comes to eighty-three thirty-three, but this says ninety-six forty-nine, so I, I couldn't, and I didn't have time to call him back before five at the meeting, so that mean... This is what they've done to make the pumps run now. We spent, we spent two days down there, Thursday we were there till ten o'clock at night.
That's already been done.
Yeah, that, that's, that, that's, we pay that no matter, I mean, the bond paid, we have to, that has to be paid no matter what, they've already done that work. But this is supposed to, the seventy-three hundred or eighty-three hundred is, is middle addition. I don't know what, I, I couldn't make, it looked like they...
I think that's a seven, Mike, you think?
I don't know. That's why I said it's around ten thousand dollars, 'cause I, you know, I...
I just can't believe they did. See, I think it's seven or nine, you say eight.
It's an eight.
Where?
I couldn't, I couldn't.
Ron haven't said yet.
Well, if they're adding all that, that's not an eight.
At least we still got enough grant money.
I don't know what, are they adding all that?
I don't, I, I couldn't figure out what they were. I, I couldn't tell you, to be honest with you.
It looks like an eight.
Yeah, so you, you're on my side, but it looks like an eight.
Eight triple three.
When they did the, when they, when the engineers came to do work for the plant, they didn't... I, I don't know why, I wasn't in on, Brad got all that started at the plant, and then I got it put in when, after the design was there. I don't know that they looked into any of the electrical while, because they wanted to do the screen, and they wanted to replace the rotors, those were the main concerns there. The rotors and putting in that new screen, so he didn't have to manually clean out the grid and all that stuff. Other than that, I don't know that Brad actually made any requests for the plant until we started replacing some of the wires for the rotors and stuff like that, and we got in there and was like, whoa, this is... I don't know that they ever, I don't know that it's, the engineer should've looked at it when we were going through all that, yes, but I don't know that anybody's really at fault. Some of the wiring that's been done in that over the last ten years, there's, there's five different controls in there. There's supposed to be like fourteen different colored wires to indicate what is each doing, or labeled, and what, they're all red, and they're all corroded, and you can't tell apples from oranges in there, and so we just quit messing with that out there, went into the panel in the inside and found, and, and we didn't even start over, we just jumped them, so they have the correct voltage to pull in the starters, that's all they're doing now, so there's no...
Safety?
There's no safety, there's no nothing, they're running straight from the pumps to the breakers, so they're, there's, if they're, if one of them gets hot, or one of them has water getting in it, it's not gonna shut it down, it's just gonna let it, it's just gonna let it cook itself down. So...
Miss, pumps are expensive.
Our pumps aren't, my pumps aren't as expensive as Ty's, they're eight thousand instead of nineteen thousand, but there's, eight thousand dollars is still... But, yeah, I mean, by doing this, you save...
Thirty-two thousand, possibly.
Yeah, I mean, you got four pumps down there, so you could potentially save the life of those four pumps by, oh, there's a little bit, what it does is it monitors the condensation inside the casing. Those pumps have oil in them, and they, once they get so much water in there, they basically, they close a contact, or, or, there's a, re, something in there that detects the water, that it's, disrupts the signal going back to the panel, and it won't let the power go from that module, that relay, meniscus relay module, won't send the hundred and ten volts to pull in the starter. So it's basically saying, you're getting water in, it's like getting water in your engine motor, in your car. You don't want water in there, 'cause it's not, the oil's not doing what it's supposed to, so it's theoretically supposed to save the life of your pump, where you can have the seals replaced, oil replaced, and get longer life out of your pump is the idea of it. But that's all I have. I've got like twelve more loads of sludge to haul, and I'll be empty for the year. So, but, um, we need to either yay or nay, 'cause them guys have to order that, and they still have to pull some relay wire, or some seal wires out there for those relays, and we'd like to get that done before it gets cold.
Can I have one of your papers?
Any other chance to look at that? What else is left down there other than that?
You know, I keep telling you, I think that's about it, but every time we touch something down there, it seems like we... There's another crack, so I think, and then there's a, I've got it on, you guys are gonna have this covered, I, I didn't think to make...
Does this one relay module cover all this pump?
Do I?
It says one meniscus relay module. Does that cover them all?
It says one.
Quantity one.
I checked in, the, the actual modules are like five or six hundred dollars a piece through Vander Venter for the flight pumps, so I'd say that's them all added up together.
Okay.
There's four of them, so it should be somewhere in the neighborhood of two thousand to twenty-four hundred dollars for the relays. And then wire, and... It wasn't, wasn't very descriptive.
Does anybody have any other questions on those billing? The chair would entertain a motion to move forward with approval of the work. Do we have a second? Right. All in favor? Any unanimous? On the module relays and... Work at the sewer plant.
And that didn't include the generator, right?
No, the generator's its own deal. We need to, um, apparently vote on this. If we're gonna go forward with it or not. And we need to decide whether we need to, if we want to go forward with this or not. We've got pricing here for the generator, the transfer switch, the concrete pads, the footing, backfill, cornwoods, grading seating.
I don't think it's necessary. I mean, I'm jumping out of power more than... Three hours.
Well, I guess, my, my two senses is it is exactly like insurance, but that one time that you really needed it, and we were out for twelve hours or fourteen hours or something, it would pay for itself and bypass regulations from DNR. I know we don't have one, we're not required to have one, but when are we ever gonna be able to... When are we gonna save up sixty thousand dollars to put a generator at the sewer plant? When are we ever gonna set that money aside to actually put a generator there?
Where are we at on our grant money, I'll be able to hear this, is what I wanna, kinda would like to know. Maggie, do you know?
I do know.
Can we use that? We keep hearing we're, yeah.
Yes.
We keep hearing we're, we're well within, we're well within, but we've not heard where we're at, right? Before we say this, I would like to know where we're at with our grant money. Whether we decide on where the other one is. 'Cause Mike is right, how are we gonna be able to save up sixty thousand dollars if we are in a future in need of this? But if we exceed it, that comes out of our pocket.
We gotta get the list station going first, right, I mean, the generators, I mean, we can... Leave to the last, but you're wanting to get it done now, Mike, you said?
No, I, I...
No, this was, this was Mark Ross.
Okay.
So, we will, uh...
We need to wait and see, I think.
Yeah, that's kinda what I'm thinking.
Or spend. If it'll pay it, yeah, they'll pay it.
Yeah. Can we check in with some outfit that sells, uh, generators to municipalities for? It might be such a thing, as we even go and see if we can't get one from a- Surplus or something, state? We might look into that. Because, uh, everything that these people do is marked up fifteen percent, fifteen percent or more, five percent, I mean, it-
What's the maintenance on the generator?
Be dishonest.
I, I think it needs to be serviced like a diesel pickup, as far as the oil needs to be changed, and it once a year, every six months, something like that. It probably needs to be run every thirty to sixty days for ten to fifteen minutes, to just make sure everything's getting nice and warm and the seals aren't going bad. I mean, I think you treat it just like you would.
They mark their labor up fifteen percent.
That kind of thing. Well, and that-
Little table, this is, this time, I suppose. Get with the board, find out where we're at with our grant money and explore other options.
Right, and see where the place's options to get are maybe. Now, I'm assuming this has to be a monstrosity of a generator, Mike?
It's a, it's a three-phase, the, I think the thing that makes this a little more, we can't just go to the surplus and prob, I mean, it's gonna have to be a special. We've got a grounded phase at the sewer plant, which-
But can we get a state bid on them somewhere?
I, I had no idea. I've never looked into it.
We even look into it.
And I, I don't know anything about that grounded phase. I know the electrician was complaining about it, saying that, well, that's a, you're gonna have to make sure your generator is compatible with that grounded phase. In other words, you're gonna be bringing three hot legs in here when one of them's supposed to be new, you know? You're talking way over my head.
Way over mine.
I don't know what you're, anyway, so I don't know if that has to do with the price, I have no idea.
We will not build on this, and then, um, anybody have any questions for Mike pertaining to the sewer plant or any of its workings?
All right, thank you.
Thanks, Mike.
My turn?
Officer Hayes.
What's that there? Or Kelly. Busy, huh? It's always busy, see, doing something here and there. Uh, did you get ahold of the Ace of Shaw's secretary, uh, last week? And try and try and remember to call back, but we did finally get ahold of her. She has committed that they will be here sometime in November to look at their properties, but not, hasn't given me a date.
It happened in July.
Yeah, that's a shame, but. They, uh, I asked her to come by here when, when they got here, we'd like to go around the businesses with her, to the building, and she said that'd be great, so. That's kinda where we're at with that, so hopefully they'll be here soon. She's trying to get them cleaned up. She doesn't have a lot of power, she said ba, basically she gets hired to write the checks for that company, but she has to do what she's told, so.
Call if it's a few years.
Yeah, oh, yeah, definitely, definitely. I just got the list last week from Brent, and I think there's fourteen properties. Fourteen, I didn't realize there was that many. Yeah, of course, they're, they're the property descriptions, they're the address, so I'm still trying to pinpoint where all those are. I knew about eight of them, so. Yeah, I know all these up here from the three houses, they got down here, so.
I have no sense going, they have been mowing it all this summer, much.
No, and, and I talked to the ones that were mown, and they've backed out because family conflict, so.
So is the building next to the one that we're tearing down, is that an Ace of Shaw?
Yes.
We're not tearing it down.
We're not tearing it down, that's right.
No, I didn't, uh, one of us-
That is being torn down.
Right, right.
The building that is being torn.
The building is being torn down.
And can we add on that, please?
No, I haven't seen him, didn't see him today, but I have seen him here the last couple of weeks. They're just not working very many hours at a time, and I think he's only got one or two people up there working right now.
I think we should've gave him a deadline.
How can you put a deadline on something you have?
I, I don't know. We're not in, it's between the owners and him.
This will be a long drawn out job there.
It may be, and it may not be, we don't have any dog in the race, we're gonna stay there.
Oh, I don't know.
Now, if you stick your foot in that race, you're gonna open the back door to a lot of problems for the city. You're gonna open the back doors to a lot of problems. We can make suggestions, we make helpful suggestions.
Somebody gets hurt, that building keeps, comes on down, somebody's-
Well, as long as we, you know, keep a good rapport with Mr. Belkamp, and keep, keep working with him, and I've talked to him.
Every time you need a little bit, he's, he's pushing you.
He's had the warrant come up to clean up the alleyway and all, all behind all the businesses the other day, and they're starting to pallet some along the sidewalk there, so that's, it's starting to look a little better. Uh, it looks like the second story is just almost down completely right now, so, so, it's getting, yeah, there's a lot of break there.
It's a lot safer, in my opinion, than what it was with the wall buckling.
Oh, absolutely, absolutely, yeah, now, now, even still, if it would fall now, I mean, it's not gonna have the fall of that ratio, you know?
Winner's gonna have fun with it.
Yes, probably, so, probably so, but.
That one day we opened up, we looked in the back door, after we'd had an inch of rain, it was still raining inside, so.
Yeah.
It's been having fun, but it's gonna have a lot more.
Yeah, so. That's pretty much it, I mean, we're still plugging away. We, uh, seen some of the motor over the weekend, not all of them, which I was told that that was gonna be taken care of by tonight, and with the rain last week, I'd say that's probably withheld a lot a little bit with the mud.
It's been over a year, I can't imagine.
Again, I talked to him virtually, and he said last week he'd let it here, so.
Yeah, over a year ago, he said that too, we're still waiting.
Anyway, that's where we're, we're wrapped that.
Any other questions for Officer Hayes? All right. The unfinished business. We've got, uh, something we got handed out there. All right, moving on to new business. We have a proposed application for, uh, any city warrants. Office State Highway P, which resides in town week, know it commonly is northwest Marion Street. Jason and Becky Barnhill Residence, they would like to build a forty by fifty-six shed. There's no particulars whether, is there gonna be concrete tie or no?
I don't know.
Forty by fifty-six structure, maybe wants to be built. Have none of that information.
Kathy, was there a form filled out for that? We may have to, I didn't know that we were doing that tonight.
Well, I didn't either.
It's not on the agenda.
Right, we have to wait.
We'll have to wait till next week, we just thought everybody was aware of it. Is there any other new business? Don't we have that? Oh, another new business we have. The annual Fall Council General Leadership Open News. For the Northeast Missouri Regional Planning Commission, Rural Development Corporation memberships. Open meeting will be immediately followed by a solid waste management district council open meeting. We all need to RSVP by Wednesday.
It has to be turned in by Wednesday, October nineteenth, so if you guys could let me know tonight, or even call tomorrow and let Kathy know, um, so that we can hit you.
At five thirty, the doors will open, dinner will start at six. Open meeting will start at six thirty PM. At the VFW Post, forty-nine fifty-eight. Would anybody like to go ahead and commit to that at the moment? Ryan, huh? I don't know if I'm gonna be here, I guess I'll to the boss. Ron, will you call back?
Oh, I'll check and check.
No, we'll be calling back, Dylan, I'm not gonna be here for that. Check back.
He wants Kathy to know.
North Carolina, that's her third name. About thirty, the first.
Yeah, probably committed for that one.
They're going up there. See, I have the table, might as well, might as well.
I said my boss hasn't called me if I'm doing it. The safe start.
All right, if there's no other- See, I have the table there. All of them comments.
He's going all right with you, that's why I'm waiting.
Hey, you talk your mind.
We'll talk.
We'll get you any instructions, but there it goes.
When was the deadline, when do we need to plug it back?
No, later, I'd like for you to call tomorrow, um, to show, not to email RSVP, by Wednesday evening.
I wanna check with Brenda's answer if we're going to move.
Okay. Gotta let Kathy know, because even when it's like one.
No, for the thirty-first.
Was it the nineteenth? That's next one.
We have to turn it in by the twelve.
Oh, okay, okay.
Yeah, what she was saying is it's scheduled for the nineteenth, but we have to let you guys know by the twelfth.
The RSVP, 'cause it's catered.
You gotta see our ass like I do, it's a camp membership. If there's no other holding comments.
All these things taking.
We will move forward to the chairman, the chairman will entertain the motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion to adjourn.
All in favor? Mayors.